Okay, this is a meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. We are on a Zoom meeting. I don't have my usual script in front of me, so.
I do. Do you want me to?
You want to read it, Adam?
Sure. Good evening and welcome. I am Paul Alpert, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. In fact, I'm Adam Block, Paul's Vice Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations, and it's being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. We do not anticipate having public participation this evening. This, because the public hearing that was originally scheduled for 7:20 tonight with respect to a major project site planned by Needham Enterprises for the property located at 1688 Central Avenue in Needham has been continued, will be continued to our next meeting in September. First, we'll confirm that all members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Jane McKnight.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Here.
The Chair, the Vice Chair, Adam Block is present.
Introduce our staff.
Before I do that, I just have a confirmation from our other board member Natasha, who's on vacation and unable to make it tonight. So she'll be present for the meeting in September. I'll also introduce our town staff headed by Lee Newman, our Director of Planning.
Present.
In the background, but guiding us through our technological challenges and solutions. We have both Alex Clay.
Present.
And Clay Hutchinson. Thank you very much. For others participating in the meeting, please be aware that other people may be able to see you. Anything that you share or say will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. The Chair will introduce any speakers on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Each board member will be asked for any comments, questions, or motions. And that is the introduction to our meeting. I turn the conch back to our esteemed Chair, Mr. Alpert.
Thank you very much, Adam. I appreciate your handling that for me. I was a bit rushed this evening to get here. So it is after 7:20. It is 7:26. We do have on our agenda a public hearing, a continued public hearing for the application by Needham Enterprises LLC with regard to 1688 Central Avenue in Needham. We had discussed at our last meeting, I seem to remember discussing this, that materials had to be presented by Thursday at noon before the meeting in order that this board could consider those materials. In this particular case, we not only needed the materials for the consideration of the board, but also we were asking for further further information regarding the traffic plan. So that, so that the boards' traffic engineers could review them prior to this hearing. And so that we could have the presentations from both the applicant and from the board's traffic engineers to educate us all on where we are on the track on the, on mitigating the traffic concerns. Unfortunately, we did not receive the traffic information from the applicant until very late on Thursday afternoon. Not, not enough time, and it was not in a form that was conducive for our, our traffic engineers to be able to easily examine it and respond to it by this meeting. There were also some, some vacation plans that stood, stood in the way of that happening. And so we are not going to go forward with this matter this evening to give us all time to, to get the traffic studies in, in, in the form where, where we all will be ready to digest it and to discuss it. And so I will entertain a motion to further continue this hearing until our next meeting, which is Wednesday, September 8th at 7:45, I believe.
That's correct.
That's a move. And we have a motion by Martin Jacobs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Adam Block has seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions, any concerns, any discussion by the board? Not hearing any? I'll call, I'll call the vote. Jane McKnight.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Jacobs.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. This matter is continued until Wednesday, September 8th at 7:45. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda. Oh, there was an R at the end of that word. I'm showing my Boston accent. The Board of Appeals matters that are, that are on their calendar for Thursday. There, there are two. The first is a.
The generator?
No, I was going to, I believe, okay, let's take the generator. So, so the generator is at 350 Cedar Street, which, which is a, a tower, television and/or radio tower for WGBH. The applicant proposes to substitute a larger generator than the one that is currently there. Are there any, any comments or questions or concerns that this board wants to bring to the, to the ZBA on this?
I moved up. We make no comment on the application for 350 Cedar Street.
Second that.
Any further discussion? None. I agree with that. So we'll call the roll. Jane McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. There's no comment on that. Then the second one is a property at Rolling Lane. 52, is it?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, eighty-three Rolling Lane. This is an application to construct a retaining wall. Were there any questions?
I will say this, and we may come up to this on the next, one of our other agenda items. I don't have any materials for this, so I can't comment.
They were actually emailed to you, I think separately. We had trouble, the way the application was submitted. It couldn't be consolidated into our application package. So we had to email it out separately, and our, the scanner was down at the office. So you should, you should have gotten emails transmitting that separately.
If I, I don't doubt that you sent it, but I think there's like a Pac-Man goes to my computer and I may have eaten my homework. So I, I have not seen it, so I can't make any comment on it.
Okay. I, I thought it was something that would be, I couldn't think of anything, any comment we would make with regard to the retaining wall. It's up to the zoning board of appeals to consider the effect on the neighborhood and so forth, which I'm sure they'll do. I, I, I moved. That would make no comment.
We'll second that motion. Okay, so a motion by Jane McKnight, a second by Marty Jacobs. Any further discussion? Marty, did you have any comments on it?
No, I didn't. What I got, by the way, in that separate email from Alex was a set of plans. It was, I don't know whether there was anything more than that, but all I saw was a set of plans.
There's also the application.
Yeah, they're, they're actually with three attachments.
I did not get, I didn't see the application.
Yeah, the application didn't say much, Marty.
Okay, well, I mean, I can make out from the plans what they're trying to do, so no, I have no problem.
Neither did I. I, I had the same reaction that Jane had, which is, this is something that the zoning board is, is well within its knowledge and authority to handle without comment by us. Yes, Adam.
Can I ask the three lawyers a question? I might get three different answers.
We probably, no, I'm gonna, not.
Given that I have not had a chance to review the material, I didn't see any of it for Rolling Lane. I, and if I abstain, are we in violation of anything? Do we need just a simple majority of three votes to make a motion?
Yes.
We're fine with that.
Yep, I agree.
I think just, just the fact that this is an advisory situation, if we didn't make any comment at all.
That's right.
Same thing.
So I will call, call for a vote. Jane McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
I abstain.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So we have no comment on the three, three ayes and an abstention. Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion of deadline for board agenda package and associated meeting materials. We already discussed that in relation to 1688.
I, I think the purpose of this is we were having some email exchanges on what was an appropriate deadline. And people had varying opinions. I just want to make sure that we have consensus on the protocol moving forward so that Alex and I can be clear to applicants about what the deadlines are and, 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 and confirm about what it is we're going to be implementing. I think there needs to be some degree of flexibility of allowing materials to come in close to the planning board meeting. I think for Alex and I, a cutoff of Thursday for an agenda package that goes out on Thursday is workable. So I just want to make sure that everybody is okay with that. And there have been, you know, circumstances in the past where materials come in later. And so if that happens and we have this firm deadline and you don't want to see anything after Thursday, it means that some items may get continued because all the information wasn't considered at that, at meeting. So there are, you know, there are negatives. There are, you know, by having the hard and fast deadline, I mean, there could be situations where we have to continue. But I think a Thursday cutoff, if the agenda packages go out on Thursday, but any earlier than that, it really becomes, I think, difficult for us to assemble all the information to have available for you. I know the Sleckman's agenda package, I think, goes out on Friday. But I think we could, we could work with Thursday, especially since we're doing things electronically. As long as there, you know, it's distributed electronically on Thursday. So I guess I'm just going to throw that out on the table and see what you think is workable on your end.
I think definitely Thursday, but I think we should also set a time on Thursday. Sometime, sometime in the early afternoon, if, if not noon.
I say noon on Thursday.
Noon, noon. This is Alex. Let's do noon. No later than noon if we're getting it out that day.
Just to, just, I'd like to bifurcate elements to our meetings. I think we're dealing with, on some things where we're not having a public hearing, Thursday noon is probably fine. There is no communication system that's going to be perfect for the applicant, perfect for the board, and perfect for any of the attendees and the public that may be observing and effectively participating in the proceeding in some way. And I know for me, if, it also depends on what the information is. If we're getting an updated traffic study at, for instance, noon, and noon becomes 12:30 on, on the Thursday, and that traffic impact analysis demonstrates a substantial change in perhaps a setback on an item or the bulk and size of an item or other conditions on the property, I cannot in an hour go through and form a knowledge, knowledgeable opinion based on the material. I have to go back and I have to look at what was reviewed, what was presented before, review my notes and what I saw before, cross-reference, find out what the new new is, and then see, and my own best practice to establish what other impacts that would affect the rest of the applica, elements of the application and the proposal. I find that really hard to do in, you know, it basically in, in two and a half or three working days, especially because I have a young family and I I have a full-time job and my particular job requires that I often work on weekends. So I, I would like to push, I mean, personally, I'd like to push it a week. If they can't get the materials in, then it's kind of the responsibility. If it's a deficient application, that's not the responsibility of the board. But I don't want to be a roadblock to, you know, I want to find a balance between fair, you know, fair and reasonable due process for all participants and the applicant.
Adam, I would say, and maybe we haven't been utilizing this. I know when, when we get the information, we had, Alex and we had basically, when we got a filing in before you guys even saw it, before, you know, a month out. The application package was put on a share file site, so board members could access it. And so maybe that's one of the solutions here.
We actually don't need to do that specific thing anymore. Lee, I think because since COVID happened, we've been putting the applications
online.
As on the town's website, which I would be happy to send you all the link to. So applications are there. The thing is, what's not there is any updates that happen along the way, you know, staff comments. Some of these things are evolving and we are, what we're putting on the website is the application materials. And that's the same as what we put on the share file site. So.
And yet if we're.
That's just for information.
If we get something, if someone comes in, an engineer, not a traffic engineer, you know, makes a change, for instance, to capture and add a drainage basin on a, on a piece of property. I don't know if the town engineer needs to look at that as well, and if Thursday afternoon's enough time for them to also comment, it kind of.
Well, no, if, if, if we get something that late, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not part of the package and not on the agenda. I mean, if we get something in and it requires, you know, engineering review and they don't have it done, then I'm going back to them saying, you need to ask for an extension. This hearing is not ripe. Um, so if they can't, I mean, there's, there's a certain expectation that we have in-house in terms of how long fire, police, engineering have to review things. So we're generally giving them two weeks and we're giving them, we're telling them, basically, we need their letter with their review comments.
Two standards. You're saying we have two different standards.
I'm sorry.
Depending on this, depending on the significance of the item being submitted, it's standard one or standard two?
So I think what we, I, I think what we're dealing with, Adam, is the initial application. The initial application generally comes in long before it's put into the agenda. It comes in, it's reviewed by Lee and Alex. They send it out to the, to the other departments for their comments. And that's a, and, and then they've got it all together by the Thursday before in order to put it into, into our packages. Part of what we're talking about here is we're in the middle of a hearing. We're asking for more materials and we're asking them to get the materials to us, the requested materials by the Thursday before the next hearing. And you have to remember that we're having our hearings only generally two weeks apart. It's a three weeks apart, but they're two or three weeks apart. And so, you know, if, if you want the materials one week before, before the next hearing, you're only giving them a week to put it together.
Or, or in some cases, it's a month out.
In some cases, yeah, yeah.
And they still can't, they still can't get the requested material or information on time.
I have a question for Adam. We, we, we understand, and it was just repeated by Lee, that the app, application with all of the plans comes in two weeks before our meeting. And I know I've been frustrated because we are not getting delivered to us plans, you know, good-sized plans that are readable.
Hard copies.
Hard copies. If we had those hard copies delivered to us a week ahead of the hearing, and then what we were waiting for as far as the packets go, you know, naturally, they, that material would be again in the packets, but also any follow-up, the report by the police chief, the report by the Board of Health, any particular change they might have done between the application and the hearing would be in the packets. Would that give you time to review the basic application, the plans? And then so the, the last minute, two and a half day work is just on those materials that supplement that application.
So it's a good question, and the answer is not black and white. And the problem is that this whole timeline is dealing with a gray area, and I, I don't mean to frustrate the board, and I apologize if I am. And yet, if the piece of information that's outstanding is revised environmental impact analysis, sound analysis, traffic and traffic impact analysis, those are substantive documents that require going back to the original plan, seeing if the site plan is consistent or not, if it lines up, if there are any other problems with it. And, and yet, and I find that the prudent protocol is to go back and review all of the base material to see how it may impact things beyond what we take for granted by what the, the applicant is advocating. Do you know what I mean? I, I, I.
But if we get our packets, if we get our materials Thursday afternoon, that's giving us, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. It's giving us five days to find some time to review it.
In, in, in theory, it is, but it really, like, if I'm working a full day and then, you know, my nighttime routine with my son, I hate to go into all the detail, but you know, I've done my meeting at five or six, I get into dinner prep mode, and then I, you know, work to get my sun down, clean up dinner. And then I've got, you know, you know, I'm up until 10 o'clock at night, which I don't mind doing. I signed up for this. I do it for clients of mine. I, you know, I get that. And yes, we have the weekends. Sometimes I work on the weekends. Sometime I take a weekend off. It's just not an easy balance. I'm prepared to go along to get along with the rest of the board and say Thursday at noon for now, but I may cry help if I need help and I need more time. If it's a, if it's a substantive thing.
That's fine. There's, you know, we can, we, we can show up at the, at the hearing on Tuesday and explain to the applicant given what the situation is, to say that what was presented to us for the, for, for, for the weekend is, is so voluminous that we need more time to review it. And, you know, we'll, we'll hear you out, but we're not going to close the hearing. And, you know, we'll, we'll give ourselves more, more time to review things for the, for the next hearing and continue it.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on one thing that we're balancing here. We keep, we carefully keep track of the number of weeks, days between application and decision on a special permit. Planning boards in general are criticized for requiring special permits in towns and cities for requiring special permits for development. And you find, you know, if you follow legislation, that their, the legislature is often trying to cut back on that and take away our authority to grant special permits because of the idea that it's onerous on the applicant. I think we take great pride in Needham on quickly processing special permit applications. And we want to keep that up. And although we want to have reasonable deadlines to be overly strict, it, it could, could affect that whole process and, and just make it look very bad. So I'm, I'm kind of balancing that in my mind.
Yeah, I think there was a time, you know, when, when there was criticism about how long it was taking to process permits. And I think we, we years ago made a decision that we were going to try to be as expeditious as we could. And I think we're faster than most other towns around us. So I mean, that's, that kind of is the balancing act. How quickly can somebody who's a private person expect to get through a process and get to a permit to be able to implement their business objectives?
Exactly. It's an important goal. And I want to ask Alex, when she said noon on Thursday, do you mean that the packets will go out on noon? And if that's the case, what is the deadline for both the applicants and our town staff to get things to you?
Can I have two left? Um, sorry. I was saying noon for a deadline to receive materials so that I had the afternoon to prepare the packets and, pardon me, get everything online and everything. So I was saying, for anything that's going out into a packet on Thursday, noon has got to be the drop dead. Because I heard that some talk about maybe the afternoon and, and I just, I need that time.
And as far as getting the packets to us, is it reasonable for us to say, Alex, we want those packets by 5:00 PM?
I think we'd like to have it, the goal will be 5:00 PM, but you'll have it maybe by nine o'clock at night, depending upon if there are problems. Alex, I'll, let you answer to that.
I concur. I mean, I definitely have every intention of getting it done by five. Yeah, but sometimes, you know, sometimes things come up. But yeah, that would, that would be the intention. And, and that's fair because I understand that, you know, after work on Thursday might be some of the time that you would want to start delving in. So definitely.
Depends, depends on what good, bad TV there is.
Fair enough.
And then I have also a question. I was trying, you know, I, I mentioned how I'd like to have the physical plans delivered the way they customarily were in the past. And what, what is a reasonable deadline to ask for that to happen?
I think that when the application is filed with us, and I thought we were doing this. At the time, when we get the application initially filed, we required the applicant to send copies of those plans to you. And I thought that was happening. I just, um, so.
Generally is happening, actually.
I think it is, yeah. But I, I didn't know if we had, you know, any particular time that we had set for people. And what, what is our expectation on that?
The expectation for me is that when they file the application with us, and Alex is basically putting it up on the website, they are also sending plans to you guys. So you're getting them maybe a month ahead. I think it gets tricky when they start, like in the cases, 1688 Central Avenue, which I think. I think it gets tricky when they start, like in the cases, 1688 Central Avenue, which I think is kind of a unique circumstance. In and of itself, when the plans are continually changing. And I think there the expectation is that when they're giving us a revised set, they ought to be sending you a revised set.
Absolutely.
I know, I I just got a revised set on 1688 a couple of days ago, so.
Yeah, we got revised sets a couple of weeks ago now, but I, it may not be the set that you just recently received. Probably wasn't, it was probably the next prior iteration. I mean, I I cannot look at the plans online in the packet. That. Is is on the website, I can read the written materials that shows up on my screen, fine. But the ones are just so, so large that if I fit it to the screen. It's scrunched down, I can't read it, and if I'm. Fitting it so that I can read it, I have to scroll. You know, up and down and sideways in order to see what it is, and I I just can't look at the plans that way, I, we need to have hard copies of the plans sent to us.
Okay, well, I think that's that's fine, I think that's that's what the expectation is, that the plans will be hard copies sent to you. At the time the application is filed, so that you have at least three, four weeks ahead of the hearing. And then revisions as we receive them.
Right.
Well, we want to make the, you know, make that clear to the applicants in some manner, so that. It happens consistently, and then the other question was what about written comments from members of the public? We were talking about some, I mean, we want to, I I guess I, in my email, I had proposed. No later than noon on the day prior to the meeting, so that would be Monday noon for a Tuesday.
Alex pointed out to me something that I had not seen in legal notices, I can't remember, Alex, what towns they were. But in the legal notice itself, they indicated when the written comments needed to be received for a hearing on a certain date. So there was like a notice out to the public that if you wanted your comments considered. They needed to be received by a certain date, and then they went into the packets. So maybe we could use that as a model and link it to the timeline that we have, which is a Thursday before that meeting.
Okay, is the Thursday before the meeting. Too late?
Well, we get, we've been getting on 1688. In particular, but on some, on some other projects where the public is. Concerned about the project. We get written comments. Pretty much up to the day of the hearing. And, you know. The applicant has to get materials to us, it's their project. We're considering what they're presenting to us. If somebody has comments about a project. What's been happening is. Alex gets those comments. Onto the website, and we get emails that says this was just received and it's going into the packet. And a person has to realize that if they're getting a comment, a written comment to us very late in the process. We just may not have time to read it. You know, and.
Do we say that anywhere, Paul?
What's that?
Do we say that anywhere in any of our instructions?
Well, we don't, but you know, I've I've had situations where we've gotten communications and I've shown up at the hearing. And said, I haven't had a chance to read this yet.
Right, so why can't you say that? All I'm suggesting is, let's make it clear to anyone who wants to file. That if the material is received less than X hours, something before the start date of the hearing. There may not be enough time for the members to consider, and we cannot guarantee they'll be seen with whatever consequences that may include. May include. We may need to see this hearing continued. And just let it be known that there is this type, this bound bind that we're put in when we see, receive late materials. And we're not going to be blamed for it, we're just not going to be.
And I I had proposed noon on the day before the hearing or meeting.
And if material is not received, so that it can be delivered to the members by that time. We cannot guarantee those materials will will be received, reviewed, or have any impact on the hearing.
Well, then we can put that in the legal notice, that's where.
That's fine, some, you know, I'm not, I'm not married to any of that language, but that's the concept, put people on notice. That they're responsible to make sure we get things early, and if you want to do Monday noon before, it's fine with me, Gene.
But you also have to remember, guys, that. We're talking about public hearings, we're talking about the public having the right to show up at the hearing. And verbally at the hearing, tell us what they want us to know.
That's right.
The fact that they're sending us something in writing the morning before or the day before, that doesn't prevent them from showing up at the hearing and just. Saying it. So I'm not as concerned about. The comments from the public because, as I said, you know, they can. They can show up at the at the hearing and make sure, and and and, you know. We we need the comments, they're entitled to the comments, but if they don't get it to us in time for us to review it. We, it's the applicant's materials that are legally important.
Well, there's also, I mean. Part of this is us and part of it is the, you know, is the right of the public. Because we get the material kind of before the public gets it, even though I know we do post things, I'm not faulting. You know, our process in 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 posting things. But all, you know, the other challenge to this is. Other, you know, participants. Members of the public residents that want to comment and review something that may particularly affect their own geography or elsewhere. And they don't, they don't have enough time to be able to consider it and to think it through and to comment thoroughly or knowledgeably in the process.
Right, which is why, which is why the applicant has to get it to us, you know, Thursday. So that the public can see it over over the weekend and get their comments to us by Monday.
So what, so let me back up, so we're saying that, Lee, that we, that. Applicants are required to get their updated supplemental information no later than Thursday at noon. And thereafter.
And sometimes it will be earlier if I have to have a.
But the point is no later than noon.
Right.
Alex, that gives you a period of time to process the material. And include it in the packet, and then the packet is uploaded at what day and what time?
It's uploaded on that Thursday that you get it.
So sometime before 9:00 A. M. On Friday morning.
Five o'clock at night, well, I think our goal was five, and we, I think Alex said.
Five on Thursday.
Thursday, you get it and it's uploaded to the website.
So that's it, that's the theory, but in practice, we don't always get that, and my, in my, in the parlance of my nine year old, sometimes. Duty happens and it's delayed, so, and that's rea- that's reasonable life.
It's D U T Y, right?
Yes.
What we're trying to do now is to decide what the rules are and what what. Decided to be are the rules that we will.
We're clear on that, I still just want to finish through the the timing here. So that by effectively 9:00 A. M. Friday morning. All supplemental materials are available both to us simultaneously as to the public. And if the public is not made aware of that, so what I would suggest. Is as a matter of communication, we should have a posting somewhere on our site, especially when we revamp the Needham site. There should be some kind of an update communication. And anyone who signs up who's interested in the property located at 123 Main Street. Would get some kind of automatic email, that material has been uploaded, new material has been uploaded. We would get that too, and we all have the public and us board members have the opportunity to review it Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And Monday in time for the hearing Tuesday evening.
I think that's already happening, people sign up for a notify me there and they're.
It's not, it's really, it's, it's not really, and I understand the concept and we have the ability to notify me. But then I don't think they're getting communicated when there's an update of additional information. The other thing is, the other thing is, then we have. Then we're saying that as board members, we actually won't get the physical copy. So for instance, if there's a new plan and the plans are five to eight pages of 11 by 17. We're not getting that until Monday. At noon, is that right?
No, we should be getting those at least a week or two in advance.
But if they're updating it as supplemental information, they can't.
New plans need staff review, I don't think, I think new plans, revised plans are in a different league. There is almost no time where no staff would review revised plans, sometimes it's just engineering. Sometimes it's maybe just health or building, but it's gonna, it's gonna require staff review and. I, so I, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think revised plans.
Should be coming in at least, at least two weeks before that Thursday deadline, because they're going to have a staff review, so if we're getting those revised plans. Two weeks ahead of time, you'll be getting those plans two weeks ahead of time. And if that's not happening, then the applicant, you know, is is wants to present a plan on Thursday, that hearing is going to be, has going to have to be continued. They just haven't done what they needed to get done to actually facilitate a a meeting on on that, the following week.
Well, is it always going to be two weeks, I just am saying this because sometimes we have two weeks before meeting, between meetings. And on meeting A, you might say we want plans revised by, and then the hearings continue to meeting B two weeks later. I mean, if we want them to. In advance. And hearings that are continued, plan revision just will need to be continued to to meetings out.
I mean, that's, I mean, so that starts to get into into this, you know, elongated special permit process. I mean, when we were all getting hard packages, plans were going out on the Friday. Before a meeting, I mean, that's when the agenda packages went out.
Yeah, can I, can I just say something here? It seems like we're responding. To a particular case. Where we've gotten bombarded with materials. And it's not the usual case. I think we got to make sure, keep flex, some flexibility in the system. So for example, if we're calling for additional materials from the applicant, and we say, well. It's got to be with Alex by noon on the Thursday before. But it's a, it's a relatively small thing and it's. And, you know, maybe they can't get it to you by noon on that Thursday, but. They could get it to you two hours later, or. It's, it's not that big a deal, when it comes, it may be a half a page. And why, why does somebody need five days to review? So I, Marty, I completely agree with you, the challenge here is that. We're trying to create a one size fits all scenario. For information that could be on the one hand, very simple like you're talking about, that has, that. That answers one specific question on a whole application. Or it could be more complex information that has a significant impact. And that's, I don't know how to square that, plus, having enough time for public members to be able to also. Consider the information, but. We, I think we have to deal with that on a case by case basis. We have to try to.
Well, we have to have some rules and some understandings, you got to, look, I was late getting here tonight.
It's fine.
You know, I work in downtown Boston. And on a Tuesday, I have to leave my office earlier than I usually do. In order to get home in time, have something to eat before this meeting, you don't want me to be hangry. Leave me, okay, you know, have something to eat, and, you know, I've had situations where on Tuesday. You know, I leave my office at 4:30 or 5:00 to get here, and when I get home, I find that there are emails from Lee with more materials in it.
Yes.
I don't have time to look at that, excuse me.
And that's, and that's fine, and but we let it be known that if you get anything with any complexity. You better get the materials in very early. So we set out, so we set out these rules. And yet we're saying that, you know, we'll do our best effort to be able to review material. That comes in after the fact, if it does, depending on the complexity, the board members may or may not have enough time to consider that additional information. That's what I'm. I totally concur. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, then I I think I have a framework, I think we're talking about the noon on Thursday for the materials from the applicant. The the agenda package to be done by 5:00 o'clock, available to you and available to the public. And the legal notice to indicate the comments to be considered at the hearing. Will be timed so that it has to come in the day before the hearing by noon.
If they want to submit written comments, of course, Lee, you know, if people want to come in. You know, and and if they can't submit it in time, or they do submit it and we haven't had a chance to read it, they they have an opportunity at the hearing to. Read it to us.
Let's implement this and see how it works, it's not like if it doesn't work, we can always fine tune it, if it creates, if if there are still problems. Does that seem like a plan moving forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good, thank you all. Minutes, there was one set of minutes in our packet.
Yeah, the June 1 minutes, I sent out a red line, and there's nothing in particular. I needed to ask about it on. If everyone had a chance to take a look at it. So I may, should I move that we accept showing?
Sure.
Yep, okay, I move that we accept the minutes of June 1, 2021.
As marked up.
As marked up.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, oh, yes, Adam, go ahead.
Quick question, I I am apparently the clerk. And, Lee, do you need me to sign the minutes, and I don't, I don't know if I've signed minutes more recently.
Well, we can put, yeah, you, technically, they they really should be signed, we can put together a whole package and you can, you can sign them all, Alex is. Can help you facilitate that.
Okay, whatever's convenient for you guys, it's easy for me because I'm around the corner from your office.
Yeah, it would be nice to get them all done.
We'll have some from Paul, I think, from 2020. So I'll, I'll, yeah, we'll work on that, thanks.
And I I I have no official role here, and I'm just a compulsive editor.
You handle this so well, Gene. And we all appreciate it, believe me.
We do.
Okay, then, so.
Are we ready to vote? Gene McKnight.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous, for, what or nothing. Correspondence, I don't recall seeing any correspondence except for 1688, and so we don't need.
There is a correspondence, I'd like to speak with you about the issue of the 128 Business Council Shuttle. We have from Monica who runs it. I think you remember earlier in the year, in the spring, I brought to your attention that there were a couple companies that weren't participating. And I reached out to them, I think the hotel was one of them, and they corrected that. TripAdvisor has switched over from providing a private shuttle service to actually joining the 128 Business Council. And then the other participant at the time was Wolfen Company, which owns the property at 250 First Avenue and 117, 117 Kendrick Street. And I spoke with Mr. Schlegler, and I was assured that they would be reaching out to the 128 Business Council. And rejoining, because a condition of their permit is that they provide for that shuttle service. And so we subsequently received some communication, which is in the form of this email from the 128 Business Council. Indicating that they have not renewed their membership, which makes them, you know, really noncompliant with the terms of our permit. So I would like to, you know, maybe, at the time, I think we thought we thought about inviting people in, and I said, no, I can manage a conversation with them to see if I can get it resolved. But this particular property has not been resolved, so I'd like some, just, you know, some direction from you in terms of how you want me to proceed.
Last thing you said, Lee, I just didn't hear it.
I I like, just like some direction from the board in terms of what you would like me to do as next steps here.
Let's see, okay, well, under the, under the permit, we have the right to call them in and ask what's going on, right?
Yes.
And the ultimate, um, um, penalty we have is to, um, have the, uh, occupancy permit rescinded. And I hope they're aware of that. They may not be aware that we have any power whatsoever. Isn't it true that way, that's, that's, if there is a violation of the special permit?
Yes. So do you want me to contact them? Um, our, our meeting on September the eighth is really pretty busy. What do you want me to do? Do it for the second meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is what, what day? Do you remember?
It's the twenty-first. It's my husband's fortieth birthday, so I will not be there.
So it's over a month from now. Anybody concerned that we're waiting a long time for that?
Well, possibly if Lee tells them that these, they're on the agenda and we're, we're very concerned about this issue, perhaps in the meantime, they'll do something about it.
Yeah, so why don't we put it on to September eighth with that warning? And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe things won't be as busy with the other agenda items as we thought this one would be, you know? Who knows what's gonna happen between now and then? But I think we need to light a fire under there.
I agree. I completely concur.
Okay, then September eighth, um, I'll put them on after sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue.
Okay, tell them to be here by eleven. Okay, so I was actually planning to call on you for a report from Planning Director on, on that. I didn't realize you were considering a correspondence, so.
Okay, sorry, Paul.
I didn't, I didn't forget it. I, I wanted you to know, I didn't forget it. I, I, I just thought that it was report from Planning Director.
I would, I, I, I want, what if we, what if we, you wrote a letter, copied members of the board? And, you know, saying that, uh, you know, giving them notice that we'll, that we'll, um, talk to them on this, uh, hopefully on September eighth. And yet reminding them that they're obligated as per their special permit to fulfill this obligation. And, uh, if they don't, the Planning Board has the authority to rescind their occupancy permit or other such, uh, you know, whatever other penalty we may determine that's reasonable in the circumstance.
I think, yeah, I, 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 I can certainly prepare a letter. I think though there's a Jean, I'll check with Chris Heath. I think there's a process, if you, if you, if you're gonna start, you know, rescinding a permit. I can, like a legal notice, you know?
I, I hear that. I'm not saying that we're giving them that formal notice at that time. I'm just telling, like Marty's saying, to light a fire under their ass. If I got a letter like that, I would en, I would ensure that swift action is taken before the September eighth meeting, and maybe that September eighth meeting isn't necessary, and I'll write the damn check and move it forward. You know what I mean?
I can prepare a letter to let them know that they're in violation of their permits. And that the Planning Board was, is, is intending, wants to see them on September eighth for an explanation as to why they're, they're not meeting those conditions.
And send him a copy of the paragraph out of the permit. Says we can do it, and I think it also says what the enforcement possibilities are.
Exactly.
Well, that's a good idea, just sending the.
The decision.
Sending the.
I would not say, I would not say in your letter that you're in violation of the permit. I would say it more diplomatically, except, such as, uh, we've heard concerns that you're in violation of the permit, something like that. I wouldn't assume he's guilty. Maybe there's something else going on with, we haven't heard yet. I just. What's that?
Maybe they have a private shuttle.
Maybe there's something else going on.
Yeah, but, but I liked, I liked the suggestion of including a copy of the permit um, and pointing out the particular relevant paragraphs. On the requirement and on enforcement.
And then indicating that the Planning Board wants to meet with them on September the eighth to understand how they're meeting the conditions of the permit. And then they can explain that they're doing it some other way.
We'll hear it if, we'll see. I don't know what they're gonna say.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll prepare a draft letter and I'll let the chair and vice chair look at it before I send it out.
Great.
If I, do I sell the floor then? The next item I want to talk to you about was advancing the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, and so, um, we, we advertised, um, in the paper for the, you know, the at-large positions. And we should, should be getting something from people at the end of the month so we can make a, a decision on that, hopefully on September the eighth. It's gonna be a busy night. Um, and I'm looking at what, um, who are, who are gonna be the two Planning Board members that are going to sit on this group? Um, and then I think one of those two really needs to chair the committee. And I was, um, looking for the date to have the kickoff meeting. Um, and there were two dates I had in mind. Um, the first was Wednesday, September the twenty-second. Or the other would be on Monday, the twenty-seventh of September.
I apologize. What was this for again, Lee?
This is for the affordable house, development of the Affordable Housing Plan with the working group. Um, and this select board actually decided to appoint two people. So they're gonna go forward with two members, um, from that group to be appointed. Um, and we're reaching out to the other boards that were identified to have, um, um, participants to get them to name the folks from those boards that will be joining this working group. Um, so the Planning Board needs to decide, you need to decide who, who, you know, the two, which two members wanna be involved in this. Who's gonna chair the group? Um, and then I'd like to settle on a date for the first meeting of either Wednesday, the twenty-second or Monday, the twenty-seventh.
All right, um.
I wonder if Natasha wanted to participate in that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to discuss this when all five of us are here.
Okay, well, we can do that then, I guess, on the fifth.
Yeah, if I'm going to be on this, and I don't know if I will, but if I am, I am not here on either of those dates. I have a, uh, I have a wedding celebration on Nantucket that week, and so I've decided to take a full week's vacation to, to enjoy Nantucket in September. So.
I wonder if you're going to the same wedding?
Are, do you have a wedding in?
I, I don't, but I, I have a close relative, I have a close contact who is. September fourteenth is, I think, their wedding.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's earlier than, than we're talking about. I'm there. The, the wedding is on Friday, the twenty-fourth, and it's not really a wedding. It was supposed to be a wedding last year.
Yes.
And the couple, and the couple got married anyway, so they had a first anniversary.
Is it Ally? Is the bride Ally?
No. No, the bride is Lindsay.
And with regard to the committee, um, I've had a longstanding interest in affordable housing and have shown that interest in work I've done over the past year especially. And, uh, I would like to be on the committee.
Great, so we already have one of two.
Okay.
But I'd like to give Natasha a chance to volunteer if she wants to, so.
Well, do you want me to, to, to move it forward, Paul? Do you want me to reach out to her?
Sure.
And see if she's in, see if she's interested in doing it. And if she is interested in doing it, I'll assume that's gonna be Natasha and Jean? Is that okay? Is that fair?
That, that's, that's fine with me, and I'm sure she'd bring a lot of, um, knowledge with, you know, with her work with developers as an architect. I also very much appreciate Paul's leadership in general. And, um, so I'm kind of torn myself on. And I don't know if Paul wants to be on the committee either. He's being, being chair of this Planning Board is a lot of work in itself. Um, but, um, I would be torn if Paul were interested. But we'll have to see, you know, see if Natasha's interested.
Let's, let's see what Natasha says. I think both you and Natasha do, do bring a lot of knowledge uh, to that committee. We also have, of course, the situation where, um, you have an affiliation with Equal Justice Needham and Natasha has an affiliation with Nuari.
And I have an affiliation, I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters.
Yes, that, great. So, no, I think, I think it's great that you're volunteering to be on the board, Jean, on this, on this committee. I appreciate that.
Okay, so I guess we'll make the decision on this, on September the eighth. At the same time, we decide who the at-large members are gonna be, and we'll all have to figure out what the first meeting date is, I guess, at that point.
Have, have, have we reached out to other, to other boards?
Um, I prepared a letter that's, that's gonna go out, so, um, I'm, but, um, Alex has done a draft letter. I had, I had hoped to include in the letter the date of the first meeting, but
Right.
I'm not there yet, so I'll just leave it open-ended. I'll just indicate that we're gonna be meeting at the end of September, early October is the first meeting, and then we'll settle on a date. And I'll get that letter out.
Good.
Okay, the last thing I had was an issue that came up, um, and I spoke with, I think, Paul about this. And I think I spoke with Adam briefly about it. Um, and that is that Starbucks in, um, the Heights had indicated that they wanted to put a window in, like a, a window in their store that, like where one could walk up, order their coffee, stand on the sidewalk, um, and purchase their coffee directly outside. And so the question really became whether or not, how that use would be handled under the current, um, zoning framework. Because we allow customary, um, accessory uses by right or by special permit in districts, and it varies as a function of, of the business districts it's in, whether it's by right or by special permit. And so the question is, is that really, and then there's another provision uh, for some districts that allows for other accessory uses by right or by special permit. And so the question that I have really was how to, um, how does a board, from a policy perspective, want to manage that land use? Um, uh, do we want to take the position that it's not for a coffee shop or other kinds of stores, a customary accessory use, and specifically address it through, um, a zoning change that might allow the use, for example, by special permit? Um, given its, you know, location, maybe on a sidewalk where there could be a narrow sidewalk and it may not be appropriate if people are lining up on that sidewalk. Um, so the issue came up, um, and Dave Roach approached me um, because Starbucks was interested in putting that window in as a function of their remodel. They're actually going forward now with their internal remodel without putting that window in currently. But the question is out there. Now, I think Abbott's, which is an ice cream store, um, did put a, a walk-up window in. That was done in Needham Center. That was done, um, as, as one of those other, um, um, special, other accessory uses. And because it was with an ice cream store, it was viewed as being customary to what ice cream stores traditionally do. So that received a special permit. Um, so I guess I'm just looking for some guidance in terms of, on a policy perspective, how you wanna approach it, because the accessory use, um, would be allowed by right in certain circumstances. Because accessory uses, if we deem it to be a customary accessory use for retail operations, such as a coffee shop, um, in some districts, it would be by right. Other districts, it would be by special permit. Um, so the question is, from a policy perspective, how would you like to approach this?
I also wanna mention, um, a comparison. Uh, I believe there was a bank um, that, uh, put in a window for walk-up. Um, is, is, am I wrong about that?
It's going in, it's going in, Cent- Century Bend, which is currently constructing its, its, uh, facility on Highland Avenue, uh, near, near the intersection of May Street, where the laundromat used to be.
Oh, yeah.
They, they, they asked us about having a walk-up window on Highland Avenue.
And didn't we consider it, um, either to be just something you, you would have
Yes.
out of the primary use, or, or that it would be a customary accessory and not requiring any special extra.
We get what our reasoning was, but my recollection is that we're allowing it.
Yeah.
I think it was maybe because it was a, we are allowing it, um, although that use in that district would be by special permit, but.
Right.
Um, I'm not quite sure how we fit it in.
But what about the, um, taking out? I know, if you have a restaurant and you have a takeout, um, line, you know, you have to have extra parking, that sort of thing. How does that apply when you have a takeout window?
Well, it would probably would apply by creating another takeout station, which then requires ten more parking spaces, which may bring their restaurant use back into you because, um, they would need a parking waiver.
Yeah, which I, I really, I think what they're trying, trying to accommodate is people who are parking across the street to take the train, who wanna get a cup of coffee to drink on the train. Um, and it's really not a parking kind of situation. But I understand that that may, may be how we have to deal with it.
Well, then they'd have to come to us for a parking waiver and explain that. I just had a thought that I hadn't had before, be, because when, when Lee presented this to me before, um, my, my initial thought was, doesn't it make more sense to have this window in the back in the parking lot? So that it's not creating, um, a, a problem on the sidewalk uh, with pedestrian flow. And, um, so I would suggest that, you know, if it, if, if, if it's by special permit, then they come to us and we can question them about how they, how they plan to, um, uh, monitor a, and, uh, that the pedestrian flow, uh, for those who aren't going up to the window, is not impeded. So the thought that I just had was, it, it hit me that when we're talking about, um, outdoor, outdoor seating at restaurants, uh, if the outdoor seating is in a parking lot, if it's on the property, it's in our jurisdiction, and if it's in the street, it's the select board's jurisdiction. So now it, I'm sa, I'm, I'm thinking, well, if this is, if this is something that's affecting the pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk, does the select board have to be, have to be brought in on this? Or should they be brought in on this? Yes, Jean?
I don't think so. I think the difference is that the outdoor dining, uh, dining is physically on the public way. So therefore.
Isn't the sidewalk a public way? It's a pedestrian public way, but it's a public way.
Yeah, but it, just because people walk on it or stand in line on it. Um, I don't know. It's, it's a different, it's different anyway from putting chairs there and sitting and serving food and so forth. I think it is.
I think there are a number of different ways to look at it. I could also see in the future, if it's not Cafe Fresh Bagel, it could be a different place that replaces it at some time, but imagine a sandwich shop that makes sandwiches all the time or the pizza shop that, you know, customers come in and place their order, they wait inside, some eat inside, some take it out, where there are also takeout windows, where they sell pizza by the slice for the kids that are coming through and other workers that are looking to just grab a quick slice or two and a Coke on their way, you know, on their way traveling somewhere off. Maybe they're going on the subway, maybe whatever else they're doing. So I could see this application. What's that?
We have the subway.
And then the commuter rail, the same way, because Jean brings up a really interesting point that, you know, on the one hand, if it's, logistically, I don't think it can be in the back because there's a hallway that's shared.
That's right. I, I realized that after I said that. It's, it's physically not, not, not gonna work for Starbucks.
But the idea that Jean had that maybe they're going, picking up a coffee on their way to their, to the subway makes a ton of sense, uh, uh, commuter rail.
And you're not even from New York.
Not from New York, but I lived there for enough time that I think of it as a subway, obviously. The F train was great. It was never on time and it would stop short. So, so I, I, I think that that's an interesting thing. I think we're gonna see more and more of that. And I think that we want to, as, uh, Jean, you were espousing our, our high ideals of moving quickly on our permits. I think in the, in an effort to streamline these things, uh, I think that we should set out some certain parameters, if this, then by right. If that, then perhaps by special permit. And, and we can think through what some of those parameters are. My preference is to keep it as simple as possible, so we don't go into another six-month process for someone that would kill. for someone that would kill a season of business. So, um, I think that it's worth thinking through and I'd like to see some kind of policy type.
Well, then I think what I'm hearing is that it needs to be specifically addressed on the zoning, um, as a use. And maybe some thought given to circumstances where it might be by right and by, by special permit, but that it really doesn't fit in the current framework. Is that correct?
But what I'm hearing from the three of us who have spoken, we haven't heard from Marty, although I haven't spoken yet, but, but I think I'm in agreement on this, is that having a takeout window at a food establishment like Starbucks or, or a pizza shop or a sandwich shop, is, is a customary accessory use? Or is an accessory use that, that, uh, uh, we, we see as being a permitted accessory use? And, and, uh, uh, the only, the only issue that I see that we need to address, you know, um, of course, if we have to change the bylaw, then we may as well go ahead and specify it. But if we want to try to avoid having to go to town meeting to have, have a bylaw amendment, you know, the only issue we have is, is that in some, in some districts, it's by right, and in some districts, it's by special permit. And is that really what we need, what we want to do? Or do we want to have it either all by right or all by special permit throughout the town?
Is it something, uh, that we have to deal with immediately for Starbucks, but that we can think about, uh, for the, um, for next year's annual town meeting?
Lee, refresh my memory. Um, did we decide that if this was a permitted accessory use for this district, it was by right or by special permit?
It's by right in that district. I mean, that, that property does have a, I mean, that, that property does have a special permit on it. So we, we would treat it as an amendment to that special permit. So we would have jurisdiction. And they would probably need a parking waiver. I think the issue really is, is that if you make that determination there in other circumstances where we don't hold, um, a site plan special permit on a property or, um, where they don't need a parking waiver, um, it would be allowed by right. And so it's not so much that you don't have, you wouldn't have control in this circumstance, it's just kind of the policy door that it opens in a broader sense, if you make that interpretation.
I'm ready. Well, I think we can think about it between now and September 8th and.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to put it on the table and you can take a look at the zoning and give it, give us some thought and we can.
I'm, I'm, I'm inclined for now because Starbucks probably wants to get moving and would not want us to wait, is to point out to them that they have a special permit. And so this, uh, would, would require an amendment to the special permit, and it also generates a parking requirement. And so if they can't meet the parking requirement, they need to request a waiver. And so if they want to move forward with this, they need to, they need to make an application to amend their special permit. And to ask for a parking waiver and so they can, they can get started. I don't, I don't see any reason to delay their being able to get started, to put their paperwork together, to have their filing. And, and then that gives us time to think about this and at the next meeting or when they present it, hash out the issues. And make decisions.
Paul, would you say that, uh, Lee would suggest one way or another, whether the board would treat this as a de minimis change or would probably require?
I think, I, I, I think at this point, because we have all of these issues that we have to decide upon, that I'd like to, a de minimis change, they could, they might even be able to be in front of us on September 8th. And I don't think we're ready to do that. But they need a parking waiver.
Parking waiver is going to trigger an amendment.
That's kind of what I thought, that it really is something, if they need a parking waiver, it really is something that should require a hearing.
Yeah, yeah, then they, then they may as well apply for an amendment to their special purpose, to, to their special permit. Because they need to come in front of us for the parking waiver anyway, which requires that.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty, I've been seeing you thinking about this.
I'm thinking about it. I, I'm a little concerned about ramifications that nobody's talked about yet. And I'm not even sure that I know what they are. I just, I want to give it more thought. That's all.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting that, uh, you know, we try to kick it down the road a little bit for us all to think about it.
Yep.
And it might certainly.
Don't hold up Starbucks for too long.
Certainly the Select Board should, I mean, the, yeah, the Select Board should be made aware of this, uh, as Lee suggested. Rather than just seeing it on our agenda, maybe some special outreach so they know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can express any concern they have about the public sidewalk.
I think that's a good idea. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Okay. Anything else in the report from Planning Director or report from other board members? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Exactly.
That we adjourn.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
And Chair Alpert votes aye. It's unanimous that we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Night.
Night. Thanks, everyone.
Good night. Quick one.